Let's call this meeting, orders, Board of Education, Murfreesboro, CUSD 186. Regular meetings, March 21st, 2017, 7:00 P.M. Nancy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Forley?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mr. McBride?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Crisp?
Here. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance, knight led by Mrs. Miller?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the agenda in front of you, we need to approve, is it good to go, Mr. Grody? Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
I move.
Do we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Turning on opposed? Motion carries, item five is approval of the consent agenda, which includes District 186 Regular Board Meeting Minutes stated February 21st, 2017. Tri-County Regular Board Meeting Minutes stated February 8th. Tri-County Bills for March 2017, all applications and reports. Are there any questions? Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
I'll move.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, then, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries, item six, approval of District 186 Bills for March, and I know we had the in-betweens, or we came in today, are there any questions? Give you a little bit of time to review that.
Refresh my memory on the power school group?
That's our new student information system, and also your grade book, teacher grade book system, and probably a couple of other things as well.
Okay, any other questions? Doc, do we have a motion to approve as presented?
I'll move.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Mr. Beavers?
Yeah.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes.
Dr. Forley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Crisp?
Yes. Item seven, communications, Nancy?
I have two. Dear Murfreesboro, CUSD 186 Board of Education, I am writing to you in regards to my intention to not return as a Murfreesboro Middle School Guidance Counselor for the 2017-18 school year. I have enjoyed being a part of the Murfreesboro Middle School family. Not only have I grown in my knowledge as a school counselor, but I have developed a deeper passion serving the students here as an educator. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity the last two years, and I will truly miss everyone. My hope is that I will take what I have learned here, as I pursue those same passions, as an educator in the state of Texas. Thank you and take care. Sincerely, Cornelius Taylor.
Recommendation is to approve his resignation.
Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation?
I'll make it.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Please let Mr. Taylor know the school board wishes him well. I know he's going to plant a church.
For line, yes.
Dear Murfreesboro, CUSD 186 Board of Education, I am expecting twins this spring, the due date of April 23rd, 2017. My OB doctor has indicated she will not allow my pregnancy to progress past 38 weeks, which will be April 9th, 2017. Please accept this letter to adjust the start date of my maternity leave previously approved to March 24th, 2017. In addition, I request to utilize my sick days for the maternity leave beginning March 24th through the end of the school year. I plan to return at the beginning of the 2017-18 school year. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Sincerely, Bailey Hicks.
Recommendation is to approve?
Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation?
I'll make it.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, then, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, of course, we all wish Mrs. Hicks the best, and the babies. Fishbowl items, Mr. Rungy?
I took them from you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll start down here on Doc's end, work our way around.
To Nancy Ward, congratulations to Mr. Griswold and Mrs. Landewee on receiving a grant from the Murfreesboro CUSD 186 Education Foundation to purchase a telescope and Wi-Fi camera. They hope to use this equipment to start an astronomy club next year. Congratulations to Mrs. Green and Mrs. Carter on receiving a grant from the Murfreesboro CUSD 186 Education Foundation to purchase a weather station and hands-on science equipment that will be used in conjunction with the outdoor garden. MHS Senior Gary Griswold is working on an Eagle Scout project that will enhance the outdoor garden area at Crowthers. Crowthers Running Clubs will host their annual 5K walk-run on Saturday, April 1st. Proceeds will benefit the running clubs. Crowthers PBIS team will be meeting on March 30th to align efforts for the 2017-2018 school year. Spring carnival will be held on March 31st.
It's all exciting stuff, and remind me when the eclipse is cut off?
It's the October 21st, Monday.
And we all pray for a clear night.
Day.
Day.
Oh, day.
Day.
Well, I want a clear night, too. Is that it, Doc? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Lane?
Congratulations to MHS Red Devils Girls Basketball Head Coach Keith Jones on being nominated as an Illinois Basketball Coaches Association 2016-2017 Coach of the Year candidate. All nominees will be honored at the 45th Annual Hall of Fame Banquet to be held on Saturday, May 6th, at Redbird Arena on the campus of Illinois State University. Murfreesboro High School will be well represented on this occasion, as MHS Red Devils Boys Basketball Head Coach Darryl Murphy will be inducted into the IBCA Hall of Fame. Congratulations to both Coach Jones and Coach Murphy. It's from Lynn Navarro.
Very good, very nice, congratulations.
Congrats again to Coach Mike Lane for being named SICA Coach of the Year, fifth time in his career. 2016 Fall Coach of the Year Award winners will be honored March 22nd, 6:30 at the Duke Coin Depot during the SICA Spring Dinner Meeting. Congrats to all the winners.
Congratulations.
I have a couple of them. This is from Larry Lovell, who's the superintendent over at TriCo Unit School District. "Mr. Grody, on behalf of TriCo School District and the families adversely impacted by the tornado on February 28th, I want to publicly acknowledge Mr. Jeff Keener, the students and staff at Murfreesboro Middle School, and the families of the school district for their compassionate-driven efforts to provide both monetary support and supplies during our time of need. Those efforts were truly appreciated as our families and community members worked long hours during the cleanup efforts. We truly live in a special region, and we truly appreciate your willingness to provide support and assistance during our time of need." And a second one. Congratulations to Mr. Hall and the Key Club. On March 18th, they were given the Single Service Award and the Major Emphasis Award for the 15-16 school year. The Single Service Award was awarded for the Share the Spirit Toy Coat Food Drive, which collected and distributed 500 boxes of food, 7,000 wrapped toys, and 200 coats. The Major Emphasis Award was given as they completed 25 service projects that serve young children. Key Club is the oldest, largest service program for high school students with over a quarter of a million members, 5,000 clubs, and 37 countries, so this is a significant achievement for our Key Club to win both in a single year. Congratulations to them all.
Very good, thank you. Any others?
I think I'd just like to say thanks again to the MEA for tonight, the hospitality and meeting with the soon-to-be board members. I appreciate it, and so does everybody.
Okay, thank you. For your requests?
There were none.
Number nine, then? Item ten is the recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action for the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. So, at this time, is there, can I have a show of hands, please, who wants to address the school board? Am I correct to assume it's the same topic for you gentlemen? Okay, then I want to defer to the lady first, Jamie Green, would you come up, please? Jamie, you're gonna need to come up here close enough where you can state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Jamie Green. I come tonight as a parent, a parent, member of the community, PTO Board Member, and a volunteer. Education is our district's first priority, and I have no doubt that everyone here agrees with that. I bring a concern tonight of our school district's exterior grounds. Please know that I am not including the current high school auditorium project or the football field. I'm aware these projects are known and have been discussed, and will be discussed further. As a parent, when I walk up to pick up my child from school, I notice there's more dirt or mud in the front entrance than grass or any landscape. There are no plants in the cement planters, and bushes have grown up into the view of the windows. When I leave the parking lot, I can't see when I look for cars, because the bushes in the median area are overgrown and stick out, blocking the view. When I pick her up after latchkey, the center sidewalk leading to the front door, as I get out of my car, is covered with cigarette butts spread over the concrete. The pile of wood sheds that's been sitting since before the beginning of the school year, now with insects and possibly other living animals in it. If I'm attending another school in this district for an event, or a sporting event, et cetera, I've noticed the grass may get cut, but they didn't weedie or edge any of the areas. The decorative stone that we have around the trees is misplaced and fallen over, and just needs to be put back in place, or have something planted around it, so many cannot walk on it. The large trash cans in the parking lot of the high school are half-red, half-white, half-blue, but chipped worn-off paint, creating a look of non-importance and ignored. I fully understand financially we are in crisis, and it may get worse before it gets better. I'm not asking you to hire any ground staff. I'm not asking you to get rid of any ground staff, and I'm not asking you to pay overtime to this group of staff. Now more than ever, we have to get creative with the organization of some of our district's departments, such as maintenance, janitorial, and ground staff. Can we take a look at the current process in which the grounds are taken care of, if there is one? To my knowledge, I know there is a system in place where tickets are put in requesting items to be done. However, the grounds are not broken. In my mind, tickets should not be put in to mow, weedie, or keep current landscaping cut neatly. These are items that should be looked at, and possibly on a schedule or a rotation. Where there are empty planters around our school, or muddied areas where landscape would look great, or grass to be planted, there are ways we can improve this without the district spending money. Myself, along with other parents, have spoken and are willing to donate money for additional plants that will come back everywhere, every year. I'm also willing to research grants for beautification projects for our district's school grounds, just like the city applies for. However, when I look at our current grounds now, I honestly would not donate, because after the money is spent, I'm afraid it wouldn't be maintained, and it would just die off. This, to a few of you, may seem on the bottom of the totem pole when we have other major items on our list. Please think about whenever you were interviewed at your current job, or when you currently interview your employees, or when you visit other schools, or even your doctors' offices. As much as we don't want to admit it, first impression leaves a lasting impression. All of us here tonight know what goes on on the inside of our buildings, which is awesome. Our teachers and educators do a wonderful job, but looking from the outside may cause parents to question this. If a school looks unkept, overgrown, and not maintained, would you wonder if the inside of the school's the same way with their education and their organization? When you go to other towns for sporting events, or conference for work, and it looks ignored on the exterior, wouldn't you find yourself wondering if you were in the right place, or commenting on the look of the grounds? You may also be asking yourself, why is she bringing this up now, and it's almost the end of the school year? I realize this year's been hectic with the development of attendance centers and other items, so I just waited and observed to see if maybe it'd improve throughout the year, but it has not. When you think about it now, right now's the perfect time to bring this up. We have parents signing their kids up for kindergarten, who maybe do not have any knowledge of our school district. You have parents asking around our community about our schools, especially if it's their first year in the district. This isn't just kindergarten, this could be as families will be entering third grade at Crowthers, sixth grade at the middle school, or a freshman at the high school. Springtime is a time where people start looking to buy houses, and if they are moving here from another community, they'll be taking a look at our schools, and without even looking at what amazing things we do on the inside of our schools, they may drive by any of the schools and judge a book by its cover. Why wouldn't we want others in our community and other surrounding communities talking about how great Murfreesboro schools are? When other towns come to our events, I can imagine the feeling when they approach some of our buildings, and it looks very unkept. As a parent that is hoping to have our kids in the district for all of their education, I refuse to let our state's budget crisis define our small town and our schools. We have great things in our district, and just because it's a waiting game for funding and a budget, doesn't mean there aren't ways we can get creative about the staff taking care of these items and the departments we do have. There are other options and resources of people that care enough about this town that will help. But, if we have the staff to do it, we need to start there. I will close tonight by asking if you simply look at the grounds and take a look at our current organization of janitors, maintenance, and ground staff, and what their current plan is for keeping up with our grounds. In addition, look to see how creative we can be in making sure these items are kept looking neat and maintained. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jessica. Name first, please.
Yes, good evening, my name is Heather Parr. I'm gonna speak as a parent, because I am an employee, but I wanna speak as a parent. It came to my attention recently that we do not recognize valedictorian, salutatorian at our high school. That surprised me, and I was disappointed. I understand that we recognize our top 10, and I'm not asking us to get rid of that, but the distinction of valedictorian is an honor. I know that we can have more than one valedictorian, my high school had two, and a salutatorian. I think we should include weighted grades in deciding that. I understand that due to the schedule, that not all students can take the weighted grades. I know a few students this year were unable to take AP Physics, because it was the same hour as banned. So, I understand that not all of the same students get all of the same opportunities, because they have to make tough choices. However, I don't think that we should not recognize valedictorian. It gets put on their transcript, they are afforded more scholarship opportunities with the valedictorian and salutatorian title, and I just think that it's very disappointing that we don't recognize our top two students, or our very top students with this distinction. Thank you.
Thank you. How long have we not recognized those two individuals?
Since I've been here, so, nine years, 10 years at least, but it was a...
I can't recall the practice before, I know.
It was a believing, a practice before I got here, so, I don't know how long.
Well, I mean, and I haven't really had any of my kids apply for a scholarship in a long time. I mean, is that, is that true? I'm assuming that it is.
Yes, there are certain scholarships set aside just for valedictorian.
Yeah, Tony, go ahead.
Yeah. On scholarship application, you can still include your class rank. So, for example, we may have 12 kids with 4.0 or greater, that would end up being number one.
But there are certain scholarships just for valedictorian, tied to that title.
I know most scholarship applications are ones that we deal with, especially in guidance, that requires a class rank, that's the subject of the task, which does afford that opportunity, a lot of them are based off GPA as well. But, she brings up, you know, a good point, there's a lot of it's based off of the weighted grades and the classes that not every student can take, because of what they wanna go into, or whatnot, or some of the other electives they need, or, I mean, that's just the mercy of, you know, the schedule, one teacher can wanna teach this, and it's, there's a lot of factors that go into it, it's...
Is it something you can look at?
Sure.
I'd hate to see a kid, just for that title, get knocked out of money, because as we know, it's expensive.
And to my knowledge, nobody's came to me and said that they lost out on a scholarship, because they couldn't put the term valedictorian.
New business for the next month's agenda.
Can I piggyback off that before we move on to the next topic?
Quickly.
Sharon Drive, I think it's, it's not just about the scholarship or the money, I think it's about showing at graduation that these are your top achieving students, that we value education, and these students worked their butts off and made sacrifices and said, I'm going to take that class, I'm not going to take this one class, because there's other classes weighted, because that is what's important to me, and that is what I will show as matters. So, I think that us not having it, maybe giving the impression that that's not important to our district, and I don't think that that's true. I think it is important, educated, working here, it is important for us to have that. And I think, just using the excuse, and I said this before about many things, that doing it just because we've always done it is not a good excuse. That if we can look over it and say, why not honor these kids that have worked their butts off, we should. That's a time-honored tradition to have valedictorians speak, to have written down on your diploma, et cetera. So, it's not just about the money.
At high school, you have to memorize a lot of information just for the test, and after the test, that information goes right out the other year. And, two and a half years later, after I've graduated from Murfreesboro High School, I still remember many of the values and the lessons that I learned in that program. And it's not just about the technical skills that I developed, it's a lot about many other things that are much more important. Albert Einstein says that "Education is what remains after one man has forgotten what one has learned in school." And I think this is what the sort of knowledge that I gained from this robotics program really is about. That it's not just the technical skills, like I said, it's these other skills. The confidence that all these competitions and these interviews with judges, these, building a robot as a team has developed. It also showed me that I could be a leader, and most of all, it showed me the value of hard work, that the reward you get out of something is directly correlated to how much effort you put into it. I also learned that there's always room for improvement, not just on a robot, but in every process, and in many walks of life. Throughout my experience in robotics, we worked as a team, we learned friendship and to trust in each other. And, teamwork is always better than just acting as an individual alone. Importantly, Mr. Nichols and Mr. Humm instilled a love of learning in me, that's still today. I attend college at SIUC, I'm a full-time student, I have two jobs, and I'm involved with a few RSOs. The last thing that I wanna say is that the Murfreesboro High School Robotics Program gave me a sense of belonging in the high school that no other program quite did like that. And, I hope you all consider these things when you're reviewing possible hirings and vocational teachers for next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Grant Berger, I'm here to piggyback, piggyback with Mason here. I'd like to address the board and say, all of us here, as you can see in our robotic shirts, we're not here for any one man. We're here for the idea and the program that Mr. Nichols and Mr. Humm created. The program he created is a very special program to me, because I had no idea what I wanted to do whenever I got to high school. I didn't know what I was gonna do in college, I didn't have any clue of what could possibly lie after high school. High school was just this big, great thing that you walk into as a middle schooler, and you're like, so much freedom. And then, I went to my very first robotics competition with one of my best friends, Charles Cunningham, and I learned that through robotics, I wanted to be an engineer, I wanted to create more of this, I wanted to make an impact through the world with robotics. And, through that competition, I became more involved inside the classroom, much more involved with the robotics program. And I learned that it created an, kind of an air in the classroom. It instilled a very, very powerful courage in me, that I would never have had if I hadn't been in that classroom. Instilled a lot of knowledge that you would have never believed you could have gotten out of going to a competition after building a robot. You learn of countless things, and I wanted to highlight something about this amazing little club we have here. Since its inception, it has been to the state competition, every year it's been, it's been here. Out of every single team that has gone, as of this year, only two of them were south of Peoria, us and Carbondale. And we outranked Carbondale, and we had more teams than Carbondale. We are a small, little school, let's be honest about that. And it's very incredible for us to compete and outperform Carbondale, because we have such a strong program. And I would really hate to jeopardize that program, specifically because we may not be renewing a specific teacher. The program that we have created deserves to go on, even if the teacher may not be able to teach it any further. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I gotta tell ya, I think they're telling the truth, that's two very well-spoken young men.
Absolutely.
And except for the little Post-it note that did so solo, without notes. That always impressed me, hey, so... Thank you, gentlemen. From the general public, anyone else wish to address the board? If not, we move to employee concerns, are there any? And, we did notice all the robotic shirts, too, by the way. Thank you all for coming. We move on to old business, under item B, I suppose, District Financial Update from Mr. Grody.
Yeah, we still do not yet have a solution to the state budget crisis. As I've kept close tabs on this situation, I'm reminded of the old quote, laws are like sausage, better to not see them made. Watching the process has been heart-wrenching. We are in unprecedented times, and although I hate to say it, there are currently no good answers. We have gained, or we plan to gain, through fully funded general state aid, $311,535. We expect to lose, if they do not give us any mandated categoricals, 1.1 million. There are four payments out of those 1.1 million, and we might get one, we might get two. We will not know until closer to the end of the fiscal year, when the state looks at their revenue and sees what they can give out. We want to know if we are appropriated for next year. Very well, by the end of this year, we may be in the same situation as we were last year, saying, well, without appropriations, we're just not gonna be able to open. I was asked by the MEA, we have a monthly meeting, and I was asked, so, if we're not gonna get this money, what's our plan? As much as I hate to say it, right now, our plan is to wait. We have to wait until we see what we get from the state, we have to wait to see what we, what the state's going to do for us. General, I went to the Johnny Logan Legislative Breakfast, and I sat next to Paul Schimpf, who said it basically comes down to this, you know, he's talking about the Senate plan, which got a lot of traction, and then Rauner called off some people. He said, we just need to get Rauner and Madigan in the same room, at a table. We are making good compromises, there's things I absolutely hate that I'll vote for, and there's things, 'cause there's things that I absolutely love, and I'll vote for. There's 13 items that the Senate has currently, and they're all tied to each other. I would imagine, knowing the legislature, if it does get passed, it'll get passed two days before the end of the session. They're gonna pass a grand bargain and then walk out, 'cause once they're done with that, there's nothing else to do. We're gonna need to revisit our situations every year, we're gonna need to look at a lot of the extracurriculars, the fees, the trips, every year. But, as we get over this, we're gonna need to look at them later and later, because really, it comes down to what's the state going to do? And, as much as I'd love to be able to tell you, I know what they're going to do, I have no idea. There's a lot of talk about seriously not having a state budget for the next two years, because there's people in both parties that believe it's advantageous to them for the election cycle. Murfreesboro is not in the best situation. However, we're also not in the worst situation. And it's because we have community members that care, that do a lot of things in the town, like decorating the sign coming in, planning for Christmas. And, I have no doubts that, I'm gonna call her tomorrow, and we'll talk more about this custodial issues that we have. This town is a special place, we've got great young men that are here and standing up for a program that they care about. We're not cutting too much, and we're not spending too much, it's just gonna be that fine balance. Take our opportunities where they are, and just try and make ends meet the best we can. It is an extremely scary situation, and there's moments where I'm lying there and I'm not... It is an extremely scary situation, and there's moments where I'm lying there and I'm not able to sleep at night. It's probably not what you want to hear, but it's just honest and it's truthful. And that is our financial situation as it is right now. Questions, concerns, and comments, yeah, and the waiting game. But I was sitting there at the legislative breakfast and I realized, if they would have passed the grand bargain the other day, Madigan called for a commission to re, look at school funding, right? I was at a conference where Dr. Dunn was standing up there, and he was reading stuff from a nineteen ninety-five commission on school funding. It read exactly like what we just said needs to happen. So they're having another commission. And it's really because if they solve it now, what are they going to do for the rest of the legislative session? I am still extremely optimistic that they're going to have to pass a budget. It's going to come with some revenue enhancers and it's going to come with some cuts. I can't imagine going two more years, and that's what scares me. Because whenever I can't imagine something, sometimes it comes to pass. Questions, concerns, or comments? But I would have to say, we have to keep finding that balance, finding that sweet spot, keeping what we can and doing what we can with what we have.
It's just concerning to have to sit and wait because then we make decisions, you know, a month before school starts. And we have to restructure things so quickly, and that's, that's hard. And to communicate for families to change and...
I think everybody would agree, I have a hard time waiting myself.
Yeah, I bet.
That's, that's interesting that you say that, that we make decisions. Because last month during the board meeting, when I missed, I was in Springfield. And we met with some of the other school district administrators, and I met with some of the legislators. And one of the things I said is, if we don't pass the budget, we get fired. We lose our jobs if we just don't pass the budget and do nothing. If we pass a budget that's not balanced, then we have to jump through the hoops with the State Board of Education, pass a three-year deficit reduction plan, tell them what we're going to do, how we're going to balance the budget. But I said, you don't have to do anything. You know, you've got us, we're held hostage, we're all held hostage, waiting for something to happen year after year. And it's, it's all politics because no one wants to make the hard decisions. Meanwhile, that backlog of bills, in December, it was supposed to be, end of December, eight billion dollars. Today, it's twelve and a half billion dollars. So is that, the solution gets farther and farther away because it gets more difficult every day as those bills grow. And so that's what's hard for us, is we have to make these decisions. We have to continue providing education every day. And, I don't know, just me as an individual feel like we're, we're not taking, not the districts, but our legislators aren't taking that serious enough. They're worried more about jobs, their jobs, than they are about what happens in the state of Illinois. And, you know, as a, as a school board, this is a hard job that you have, making these decisions.
Well, there's a number of fixes. Term limits, which you can't wait on them, voted themselves, people are going to have to take charge, and people will have to call for constitution convention. Second, I'm not optimistic under the current circumstances seeing a budget my lifetime. Do you know why? Because to have a meaningful budget, a full budget, you're going to have to address pension concerns. Pension Christ, ain't nobody going to do that. They'll kick the can down the road forever. So, people, I take over. You ready? I'll write the moves for Springfield.
I'm ready for you, Mr. Rungey.
Anything else on the financial aspect, sir?
No, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Take a shot at a politician or something. Okay, yeah, we better move on then. My VP reminds me to move on. We need to address item two under Old Business, which is approval of bid for high school auditorium demolition. That was included as enclosure one in your packets.
We are going to make some improvements at the high school by taking down the current auditorium. We sent it out to bids, they came in underestimates. How much did they come in under? Oh.
A lot.
Yeah. That was good news. The companies are hungry, they're giving us good bids. So it did come in underestimates. I did tell Jan, figure out a way to get that money into the Ed Fund. She kind of went, huh, okay. And the recommendation is to award the bid to Fager McGee. It was five thousand dollars less than the next bid. I've talked, I've talked with them, they believe they're going to be able to get that done, so.
Did you, the question I had concerning the stage lighting equipment that's in there and probably hasn't been compromised by water, is there a possibility of salvaging that and maybe moving it to middle school?
We told, we told the contractors that anything that was left in there...
And I don't mean just light fixtures, I mean controllers, dim packs, that type of thing, because the stuff at the middle school age.
We told the contractors, if it's still there, tear it out. So it's going to be up to the school to get it out.
You know, we might have a chance to upgrade the middle school because that's, as you know, the musicals this weekend, and I've been there because my daughter's in it. And that equipment has the same stuff that was there when I was in junior high. Okay, and, and, yeah, we did everything by hand. And they're down now, nothing dims, they're just turning it on and off is all they can do. So we could, we could maybe make some improvements there.
We're meeting with the ROE tomorrow to talk about the demo and the construction during school, during the school year and getting all of those ducks in a row. And then we're also meeting, Mr. Seifert's there tomorrow. We're going to meet with the maintenance and the IT people to start talking about electrical plugs, things of that nature, so.
Just to make a point, you're recommending we accept a bid for Fager McGee for fifty-seven eight for demo?
Yes.
And that is cash we have in.
Yes.
Insurance, we didn't get insurance money, so we should, we will be able to pay for that out of that.
Questions? Do we have a motion to recommend as...
Mr. Seifert, can I say really quick, I have a...
It's going your way, you sure you want to say it?
I know. I did contact our insurance company today, and they do have a request in getting approved by the next level of reinsurance for another big check coming our way, so we should have that hopefully soon.
Keep it coming.
I know.
Add a couple zero, good luck.
Do we have a motion to approve the bid for demolition that's presented?
I'll move to motion in a second.
You have a motion in a second.
Mr. Rungey?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mr. Seifert?
Yes. Next item is item three, is approval of the, or approval of the bid, the high school auditorium.
Yeah, Mr. Seifert's going to talk to you about this. We did, we did make some adjustments.
I have to look at if Chris can laugh.
Seven hundred and fourteen seats, right? At our facility meeting, we talked about going down to five hundred seats, but the amount was negligible.
I'm going to bring a copy down this way for you guys to look at.
The big change was taking the second floor off, which is storage, and that got rid of an elevator.
Can I write all over this so I can keep this? Is this my copy? Is this my copy?
My last statement I want to say though is, like we said.
That's okay, don't worry about it.
Thank you, sorry about that.
It's a balance to build for the future now, given our state. But crews are hungry, we've shown that through the demolition bids. I believe we'll get a good bid on this. And we do need to support our growing programs. And I've got on my list, by the way, Little Mermaid is this weekend, but Steve's already put in my plug, so. Questions and comments about this plan?
Is this the cash flow analysis that came out of committee?
Yes.
Same one, no changes?
Same change.
Good, I'm not going to look at it again, the numbers do.
We can talk about it in a minute, yeah.
No difference in that plan as we clean the, few of those things up we talked about.
So what is it you took, you said second floor?
Second floor, which would have been storage all over, along the backside of the auditorium. There'd been a second floor along here and this whole area here.
Oh, it's gone.
There was an elevator in.
Elevator.
That was only storage?
That was, it was only storage upstairs, mechanical room.
And two lights, but we've got that fixed.
About seven thousand square feet, so about a million and a half.
Pretty expensive storage.
It's expensive, mate.
What about the four classrooms out on?
That's going to be an alternate bid.
Okay.
We'll bid that and...
Just those four?
Yeah.
Correct.
It's pretty simple to design it at this time, put it in there.
But this is, this is encompassing the new auditorium?
Yep.
The new, more secure entrance to the high school?
Correct.
And all the electrical within the building itself?
And that includes the switchgear at the high school so that we won't have other issues? We're really holding that thing together.
What we're going to do with that electrical switchgear project, we're not actually going to bid it with this one. We're going to bid it separate.
Okay.
But it's going to be same project.
This is electrical reworking through the entire building?
It is the main switchgear in the back of the building. It's an old, gone nineteen seventy-seven Federal Pacific. They can't buy parts more than that.
It's a reason.
And we'll have to take wiring back to all the, basically, it's mainly the rooftop equipment, but some of the other ancillary.
Some of the subfeeds and...
Subfeeds and stuff. Depending on the wiring.
That's, that's why we're saying it's going to be a separate bid because we're going to have to do a lot more investigation on that.
Do we have, that figure that we saw at our committee meeting included that, correct? Is everything fed secondary from that switchgear, or do we have any stab-down transformers throughout the building?
One D-wing. Those from there break.
One of them D-wing does.
Got a stab down there, but that's it, okay.
But we've had issues in the past with brownouts, and that's because of that switchgear issue and the electrical problem. So this will, this will provide a lot of protection to equipment and the electrical service that we have.
Also just start adding more welding. Equipment down, right? Welding at the D-wing.
So I don't have to keep replacing the three-phase waves after two years.
So tell me where storage will go now, I mean, it can be in this one little room.
There's going to be storage here, which is mainly, the upstairs storage was going to be for like uniforms, that type of stuff. This is for set construction. You've got set construction here, but this can be stored for costumes, that type of stuff.
It just doesn't seem like much storage, I guess.
No, it doesn't look like it, but it's a lot bigger than what it looks like on paper.
Well, what's, what's the height, ceiling height?
Fourteen feet.
Okay, so you could actually put two levels in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I want to make sure I understand this. The electrical component that I just asked about, that is included?
It's about a half a million of it.
That's where it's going?
Okay.
That kind of changes my thinking, huh? A little better.
Yeah.
Because you're getting a lot more bang for your buck than what I understood originally.
This project's allowing us to fix the security issue at the high school. It's going to really dress up the front. I like the design also because if we are able to get a FEMA grant in the future, we're thinking, what, five years or so down?
Probably, yeah, at least.
Our architects have gotten FEMA grants before, and you can redo your gymnasium with the FEMA money. So it's a...
When we, when we receive the security grants at all the buildings, at where we put the, what do we call it? The, the shatterproof glass film on all the windows. And I know that was a big concern for all of you, that we weren't able to do more because the high school had so many issues. So I think this really will address that.
This is going to be built right in the current existing...
Basically, the current location is just twisted.
Right.
And the roadway comes within fifteen feet of this corner right there.
And there's a drive that goes in the back to the second structure?
There'd be a drive, I don't have any of the side stuff on there.
Kind of overhead door?
Yes, yes, yes.
When would demo commence, cleanup?
Our plan was that if, or we had allow during school, but all the contractors preferred to wait till school's out. So I don't think that's going to be...
How long do you anticipate that?
Less than thirty days.
Well, that gives you time to...
And we're, we're not, we're to the point now where we're not going to have, ask for board approval on bids till July. We're going to have plans done on the street in June, thirty-day bidding cycle.
Do you want to explain the pre-qualified?
We're still working through the details, but I will. We've considered pre-qualification of contractors. We're working through those details. We talked about in our meeting last week. What we would do is that, put it out. Any contractor considering qualification to us, we'll pre-qualify them up to five or six bidders, and we'll know those bidders. And they can actually see the plans as they're being designed. We did that with Jerseyville High School.
We thought that was a safety issue for it.
Well, I didn't know what option broke out.
Worked out great.
Pretty check references, absolutely.
Yeah.
You're not stuck after the fact.
Yeah. We'll, we'll do a process similar to what you guys do when you hired us. We'll get, we'll get a proposal. All references, do an interview, yeah. We know most of the players. That's going to be it.
You pre-qualify and then we're still dealing with lowest.
Still have to take lowest. Still have to take lowest responsible bid.
Do you have any other questions for Mr. Seifert?
I have more of a question of, Ms. Jessica White says, this is great, we want something else.
She's getting everything she wants, but one way or another.
She's not getting her voice room and rehearsal rooms, and with the alternates, I did see the drawing. Did you put in the voice room?
No, we didn't call it anything. We're just saying, she wanted the voice room and the training rooms. If we can, if these can be afforded, that's where those have gone.
But if that's not like a warm-up rehearsal room, because that would be the choir room, I assume. So she's talking about something else?
She's talking about rehearsal room, she's talking about...
Practice rooms that are in, they're small rooms.
Oh, they're like ten by ten practice rooms?
Yeah, five by five, actually.
Okay, I know what she's talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like all gills.
Yes.
Very narrow, small rooms.
With one piano and two people.
Okay, because now, thank you. Want to get to the cash flow?
What was, I'm sorry, what was the total seating? Seven fourteen, seven nineteen or seven fourteen, something like that?
Seven fourteen is what I wrote for my... Okay, let's listen to Jan's presentation on how we pay this.
Hi. I understand that last month there were some questions on cash flow with the county facility tax money. The Center for the Performing Arts project, we're anticipating about four point three million with, with insurance and estimating what the total project cost will be. And that will just depend on where the bids come in, whether we do accept the alternate number one of the four classrooms. But our, our estimation is we could be looking at needing to finance two point six to three point three million dollars in addition to our, our insurance.
Okay. Just the meeting we had in the committee meeting, I had one point nine.
Wasn't there, so I don't know. Didn't need to be done in the district.
What's the timeline to start the other projects, like track?
Well, I said a year from now. I said, under this scenario, the financing option, this is, we sell bonds a year from now, six and a half million. This is what the financing would look like. And that was just, you know, wild assumptions, but I had to start somewhere to be able to show you that these are things that we think we can do with this money.
So based upon this, are you, would you make the recommendation that we use a ten, a fourteen, or a seventeen?
I would recommend the fourteen year. I would recommend that we, that we, you know, so we're not so tight, middle of the road, so we have...
What have we done in the past on like the general? Do you, do you know what the length of debt service was on that?
I don't know off the top of my head because we refinanced those bonds. We started that project in ninety-nine? Ninety-nine, I want to say, those bonds were ninety-nine bonds, we refinanced those. And what's left, then we did...
So you're, we're still paying.
Health, life, safety project, we are, because we did the high school HVAC and roof project and maybe a couple of other projects.
The general's not separated out from those?
No, we rolled those in, and so we had series, like a series A, series B, we did Build America Bonds. So we will have, but we're down to the payments of, let's see, the last payment, I am so sorry, this is so small, but for...
No kidding.
To put out, I know, because we're all with our cheaters. Fiscal year two thousand twenty-three is the last payment of those bonds, and it's a hundred and sixty-one thousand net payments. So all of our payments are less than four hundred eighty-two, four hundred eighty-one, so dwindling down. So we're in the downward slope of finishing off those bonds that are currently out there for the general.
Jim, what do you normally see? Or is it just all across the board?
It's all across the board. The last one we did that involved bonding was the, actually, the jail addition. And I want to say my job is that... And I wanna say Michelle did that on a ten-year, ten-year bond.
Yeah, see, the auditorium bonds in the, um, you know, which would, which we will be selling, it's a three, a three-meeting cycle. When the project gets, gets, um, approved, assuming we approve that, and we, you know, finish the plans, go out for bid. It's a three-meeting process to get the bonds, the alternate revenue bonds, um, so that won't happen until, you know, probably early fall. But alternate, alternate to the fourteen-year repayment, that's kind of a, a cycle for the, you know, for, assuming we do them next year too. So it looks more like a nine or ten-year project on the audit, the actual auditorium bonds with, um, the payments going a lot, you know, longer if we do later projects. And that's not saying that, that every project that the board decides to do has to be done in a year. That just shows us kind of a, I don't wanna say worst-case scenario, but shows us that we have room, we have bonding potential. And the, um, alternate revenue bonds, of course, the, the guaranteed payback for that is the, the county facility tax. But they do have a backup, a backup payment, that if something were to happen with the economy in Jackson County and we, and we didn't receive those projected revenues, we didn't receive one point six million, we received, you know, five hundred thousand for whatever reason. I can't see that happening in any scenario, but in that case, you could go to property taxes if you needed to, to repay those bonds. But like I said, like I said, that's a, that's a worst-case scenario because, you know, this is entire Jackson County, this is the economy.
I said here you go to a refund. You know, Chris had come to me a couple of weeks ago about how much we could spend, and I said, well, your cash flow analysis is gonna tell you what you can spend.
Yeah.
What you're gonna force. It's not unusual. Would these be considered general obligation bonds, GOs?
No, they're not. They're alternate revenue bonds and they do not, they do not go against our debt service limitation at all.
Well, the only reason I ask is going with maturities. I mean, we buy and sell GOs out of banks' portfolio all the time, and standard, theirs thirty years.
Right.
Now, we may not buy into them at thirty years. We may buy into them with only fifteen years left on it, but it's not unusual to do that.
You can go out thirty years on an alternate revenue bond also. And, and they're treated the same way as, um, a working cash bond, a health life safety bond, where you go through the three-year, the three, um, board meeting process, but you're not, you don't go to referendum like you would on a general obligation bond, so, um.
Well, I think the standard for going shorter is be it less interest expense, but you're hedging against any economic downturn. You know, I mean, you recapture your dollars and pay off your debt as, as quick as you can.
Right.
Thus saving the taxpayers some money. But by the same token, you're biting off your nose from your face if you go too short, you know? So I think fourteen, I would have picked fifteen.
Right, and, and it goes to fif- with option two, it actually pushes it out to fifteen. And I, and I haven't even looked at, I mean, the second page is option two. All that does is push it out a little bit further because it goes from, um, two point six to three point five total, I guess with cost, total cost, um.
And those numbers would then be for if we do the alternate?
The alternate, that's a decision.
So what she wanted to do is look at what would be the worst-case scenario of costs?
And, you know, pushing that out, fifteen-year repayment or nineteen-year repayment. I still like the middle scenario, whichever way we go. Depend on how the, how the bids come in, whatever the board's pleasure is when that alternate, do you wanna do it, do you not wanna do it? But, I mean, the, the bottom line to me is the, um, you know, based on everything we've seen with the, the, um, local economies, um, you know, and I've, I've done some research with neighboring school districts, with Williamson County, with Perry County, you know, what they, what they were projec- told, projected numbers, it really come to fruition and they're seeing that pretty much across the board. There's not a whole lot of, I mean, month to month, of course, you know, you'll see the bumps at Christmas time, but, um, and, you know, I'm, I'll be interested to see, you know, where our fluctuations come in Jackson County, where that comes, because Williamson County, it, it comes in, you know, like Memorial Day, voting time, I guess, like if Egypt all that, they have a big spike there, that's their, you know, December's their highest and they go to the, like, voting season, the second highest. To see where that is for us in Jackson County. But across the board, they, we're at one point six and I wanna say they were at two, two and a half or two point six million. Marion, the school district, just Marion. They're a lot bigger than us. I'd say county-wise, they probably don't take in what we do overall. But they are, year after year, and, and they're in there. They have had eight complete years, across the board, two point six million. Starting in oh-eight, when the economy was really bad, level, two point six. So I think those projections for us, the one point six, I think we'll see really close to the same and be able to do a lot of work on our facilities through that time.
I feel better about sports halls than.
I do too.
If we get definitive commitment and timelines developed for the elevator and for the HVAC and for that football and track field. Now, just so the public knows, I'm not putting athletics ahead of, you know, building maintenance and whatnot, but that is huge to the perception, much like Jamie was alluding to. You know, you got a track you can't hold tom meats, that's embarrassing, you know? And so I think if we tie all this in together and we put it all on relatively the same timeline or A-time line, period, so we could peg with some certainty when that elevator is gonna be finished, when the HVAC will be finished.
The only thing I'm gonna say to that, Mr. Krips, is, is, uh, we've met with all four buildings as a facilities committee and been given there once, basically, and I think we need to sit down as a committee and kind of prioritize by building and then by district. And then I think we need to take that and give it to the finance committee.
There you go.
And say, here, can we, can we do this?
Right, and I definitely.
Because I, I agree from a perception standpoint, I know that to put, and I'm a sports guy, but to put any kind of a sport.
And I don't think.
Expenditure up there is, is, is gonna be tough to swallow, my, my view.
I, I understand, I really understand that, that point of view and that perception, but some of the issues that we're looking at, and not just, I'm not just talking about the, the, you know, track and football field facility, but elevator and, um, HVAC, safety, you know, safety issues. We, we have, you know, potential, potentially a lot of safety issues with the track, with the football field, because that's not just a, a, a sports facility, it's a classroom. You know, we have, we have kids out there.
It's not a football field, it's a band field.
Well, we have the.
The sprinkler heads are sticking up.
The sprinkler heads coming up, I mean, we have, I worry every year when, when we have kids out there, if something, you know, that could happen.
I think, though, that we, we agree that we're gonna need to come up with that plan and.
That will be, I think, a comprehensive plan, for sure.
So that, that's a different perception.
It is.
Then you're saying you're fixing a football field or you're fixing a track.
But, but that's one of the things we talk about.
This is a safety issue then. I get that, okay.
And with me, I mean, you can ask some, you know, some of the, um, you know, Mr. Navarro, we have those conversations all the time, you know, put a call and ask about something. And, um, you know, and I, and I ask those questions and, you know, is it, is it a safety issue or, and, and when I find out it's a safety issue and, you know, our, our insurance, you know, we have, um, basically insurance audits, they, they walk through and look at our facilities. So those are the kinds of things that, that do affect us, so we have to look at, you know, those are classrooms as well. You know, we have, we have kids using those facilities all the time, so, um, I think we, I think it is important that the board look at the, the whole comprehensive.
I agree.
Plan.
Was that even, I don't even recall that being brought up in our meeting with the high school.
Need to look at the baseball field while you're at it too.
It was on the.
I saw the baseball.
I will agree.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So right now, though, this, the recommendation is to go forward with the bids for the.
He's calling my hand. Question. Sorry, good. Yeah, he's all going his way, so.
Do we need to discuss vote on tonight, the addition of those other classrooms, or can that be amended and come up later?
And so what's gonna happen is they'll give us two prices. They'll give us the price for the auditorium and then they'll give us a price of what those four extra classrooms would cost. And that's where we'll have a further discussion of, do we really need those four extra classrooms? Boy, they're so cheap, they're on sale. Do we always buy things when they're on sale? It's, it's.
Let me ask, are we presenting that alternate bid as a classroom or practice rooms? Because those will have to be built a different way. I don't think, you, you can't just take a classroom and put up drywall and say, boom.
A, a voice room and practice rooms.
You'd have an alternate, alternate.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you can't take a classroom and, and divide it and call it a warm-up practice room.
We'll make that adjustment in one of the room to make sure it's a.
Okay.
Voice.
Cause I.
What was the size of those, Jim? I'm sorry?
Um. Seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Fifty-two square feet.
Which is a fairly large class.
Fifty-two and fifty-three.
I just, I mean, I can't imagine making practice rooms. Is that expensive? I mean, granted, if you think we're in a small high school, I went to a smaller high school and we had them, so I don't know why we couldn't have them. Can't imagine not having them.
I won't. I'm not saying.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'd love for that to be part of bids.
Okay, despite Mr. Grody pressing the question, I'll say a couple things. One, in the future, because I'm leaving, I don't care what I say. I never did care what I said. This sales tax fund, and I understand government's interest, um, I think for future reference, if you're not committed to spending money to pay debt, but I understand that's the way to get it done now and it needs to be done. And I'm talking yours out of road, wouldn't it be wonderful to build a nest egg in there?
Oh, yeah.
And the reason why is, under current law, the state can't touch it. You know, it's all generated from the local level, so. And the other thing I wanna say, despite Mr. Grody pressing the question, is, uh, we're not really even spending any money tonight.
No.
We're authorizing, authorizing soliciting bids and you're going to request authorization to talk to Stiefel about, uh, being the bonds issuer.
Okay.
I forgot where I was going. Anyway, got that off my chest. Uh, do we have any more questions then? Do we have a motion in favor of the, uh, bidding process as outlined in your agenda there and as per discussion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second then. You wanna roll, follow that?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Krips?
Yes. You wanna engage somebody?
Yes.
Stiefel?
Yeah, I kinda had to twist their arm a little bit to get their help.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
They were, of course, willing to, to provide us with these options, but, um, you know, we, we haven't really fully engaged Stiefel to, to, um, work for us, so. I asked for help and, and, uh, he'd already sent me an engagement letter and I said, if, uh, if you can help me with this, I will definitely bring this engagement letter to the board for approval. And at, and at this point, it, you know, and Stiefel did work with all the Jackson County school districts in assisting us, to get the county facility tax referendum passed, because they had been instrumental in a lot of these, uh, these referendums in the past. So I think they were very helpful. They've been very helpful so far, um, assisting us with, with this project and, you know, running amortization schedules. And as Mr. Krips said, we're not spending money at this time, um, I would just ask that, um, the administration asks that the board give us permission to work with Stiefel, sign engagement letter so that when it is time, if the high school bids come in, those get approved, when it comes time to sell the bonds, that, that we can work with them to sell those bonds. And, and of course, their payment comes from the sale of those bonds. That will be part of those bonds, so.
You didn't issue bonds, you gotta have an underwriter or an agent.
You do, and it gets more, they've, um, really cracked down on that. It's a lot more complicated than it, than it is when, than it was when we issued bonds the last time. So, very, very structured, very set roles in that, and they followed that to a T.
Questions for the board? Do we have a motion to approve this presentation?
I would make that motion. Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Krips?
Yes. Uh, you wanna buy up to a hundred thousand dollars in technology computer equipment?
Yes.
Funded through the lease levy. Early things that we do, we levy a tax for leasing and, um, computers are, are the need that we can lease for this year.
Question. Do we have a motion to approve that presented?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Call the roll.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Krips?
Yes. Everything's two by two, because now you wanna lease purchase, you need to finance it, so.
Now that you've done that, yeah, so we're asking permission to go to the local bank or leasing company to actually go out with lease.
Questions? Motion to approve? Do we have a motion in two seconds?
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yeah.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes.
Mr. Krips?
Yes. What do we have? Do item four approve IHSA membership for the upcoming year?
Yeah, but the recommendation is to continue with the IHSA.
Questions? Uh, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries approval to employ summer workers primarily to assist in IT and HVAC.
IT and HVAC. Um, this is, uh, part of our internship program. We'll, once again, try to incorporate as much as possible with the CTE. But we're asking for those summer appointments.
Questions, concerns, motion to approve?
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, uh, approval of summer approval.
We, um, are making the recommendation to do the summer food program as we have in the past, starting around June twelfth to the nineteenth and going for about five weeks. Location still to be determined as we work out various jobs we're doing over the summer.
But it, we'll be in one of our facilities, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
At, at, at least one. Um, Georgia was talking to the youth of the rec.
Oh, that's.
There's Georgia.
Did you get ahold of the youth and rec center today or the park district and what did we define?
I did, I got ahold of youth and rec center. Um.
This is exactly why I was asking. I didn't know if we were gonna serve there.
They were very excited with the possibility of us coming back this summer.
Okay, you'll let us know then. Thank you.
Permission would be to go forward with our summer food.
Questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Hello? Oh. And we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries for our guests, first timers, which would like to see everybody here. Uh, what's about to happen is we're gonna obtain a motion to go in, go into closed session. Once we've gone through all that, you'll need to leave the room. I would ask the chief Robert to stay. We're gonna try to retrofit you in after the potty break that several of us have requested, so. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?